Yeah, I have an conference call and I'll come after that.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Looks like everybody's here, so I think we're gonna start, it looks like we have everybody here. So let's stand for the flag salute, please. Allegany, dance to the flag of the highest states of America. To the republic, which is one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Candy, would you do the roll call of members?
Harry Armigas, here. Megan Dray, here. Jen Pike.
Here.
Diane Page, here. Cory Sherman.
Here.
Nina Southmore, here. To me, Stumpf, here. Kelly Tullinger, here. Mark Purcell.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to consider to waive the reading and the approval of the minutes for the April 19 voting meeting, the May 10 workshop, and the May 17 voting meeting, and the June 10 workshop meeting as attached?
I'm ready to go, Susan.
Okay, any seconds?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Do we have any public participation this evening? It doesn't look like it. All right, I don't think we have any presentations. Any more concerns? Not seeing any, we'll move right into the consent agenda. We have three items on there, is there anything that you would like to have pulled off and voted on separately? Okay, so can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to make up the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. We'll go to finance and purchase, and since our finance guy isn't here, can I pick on you, Carrie?
Well, I suppose.
You're on the finance committee, so we'll...
No, I'm not.
Oh, you're not? No. All right, we'll give it to you anyway.
Cover the meg. All right, let's, well... Oh, actually, A through, um... Oh, A through H, right?
A.
G. That H is good. Oh, Stacy's here. A through G. A to G. I make a motion, or...
Okay.
See, see how I'm not used to being in this role, in this, in this one?
Make a motion to make?
Make a motion to approve A through G.
All righty.
Seconded.
Okay, we have second, do we have any discussion? Okay, not seeing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now, Stacy.
Good evening. We've had a strange month, the last month of school, especially the last few weeks with the water situation, but luckily we had a lot of salt trays on hand. It's very, when we get the kids in and out, we get to be served a few less meals, but that had to do with the number of days that we did not have our kids here at the high school during the PSMA month and a few of those days made when we left early. Luckily, our drills are really good, and they were able to get our elementary kids fed and out and all the plus and minus type of thing. Um, all of the field trips, everything went really well. We don't see any hiccups for June, all of the enforcers and all of that have been turned into the business office, and the pre-game head starts, everybody has stayed in, so... Other than that, we should look good for the end of this school year on New Year.
Just thanks. How do you like your new position?
I like it, I like it. There's little surprises, like I didn't know that there was a bomb. I knew there was a bomb in this committee, but then so I got an email today about, are we doing an email this year? Do you want to, I just had to email David and say, are we up for an email this year? Do you know where I find, it's like, actually, Grant was the committee chairman on this. So I'll be digging around in the office for that, you know, so... It's going really well, but yeah, there's, everyone's all got emails where I go, well, I guess we'll dig around in the box until we find what's going on, but it's going, it's going really well.
Thanks, seem to be doing well, John, so appreciate you.
All right, item I, consideration to approve the following secondary positsories for the 2021-2022 year. PLGIT and several Farmers National Bank accounts. So moved.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? See if you're hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries, let's move on.
Item J, consideration to approve as presented, 2021-2022 fringe benefit costs as listed.
And you don't have to read all.
John. So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? This is basically just indicating, nothing has changed as far as coverage, this is just indicating the cost for the next school year. Okay, any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Letter K, consideration to approve the Homestead Farmstead Tax Exclusion Resolution as attached, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? Okay, that would be for this year's exclusions on the taxes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter L, consideration to approve the 2021-2022 school year, all federal programs and grants as part of the district budget, so moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter M, consideration to approve the proposal dated June 1, 2021, from Zach Shekulow Esquire, to act as solicitor for the Allegheny Claring Valley School District at the rate of $100 per hour for attorney time and $30 per hour for legal assistance time for the 2021-2022 school year as attached, so moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter N, consideration to approve the proposal dated May 10, 2021, from Mark J. Huber, McDonald, Ellie Jones, and Britton LLC, to provide legal services to the Allegheny Claring Valley School District at the rate of $210 per hour. Rates for labor and employment associate will be $175 per hour, and paralegals will be $90 per hour as attached, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so these are the same lawyers we've used in the past. Zach is local, we use Mark, as we did Monday night, for any issues that Zach refers to him. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter O, consideration to approve the 2021-2022 AC Valley's school budget in the amount of $16,488,817. The local portion of revenue to support the proposed budget would result in the following tax levels in the four counties. As shown, you need me to read them all?
No.
Okay. As shown on our agenda.
We've gone over these multiple times, so I think everybody's good. Good with this, and he's done a great job. All right, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, make seconded, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did we lose you, Jen?
No, she's there.
Did she say aye?
Aye. Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me. Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Letter E, consideration to approve correcting the total amount due for the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project. The amount approved at the May 2021 meeting was $437,727, plus $55,000 contingency for repairs. The total amount due should have been $442,980, plus $55,000 contingency for an additional amount of due of $5,253, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion. So this isn't anything new, David sent us an email indicating that there was a difference in that amount from what we had first approved. So we're approving the second amount to make it legal as far as the board information. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter Q, consideration to approve removing Megan DeHart from the high school money market activity account and the high school regular activity account with Farmers National Bank of Hamilton, so moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Sorry, I gotta tickle one of my fingers. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone need to abstain? Motion carries.
Consideration to approve adding Courtney Chalmers to the high school money market activity account and the high school regular activity account with Farmers National Bank of Hamilton, so moved.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Consideration to approve the services contract between the Allegheny Claring Valley School District and Linda Booth Bell Learning Processes dated May 27, 2021, with beginning date of August 24, 2021, and ending on May 28, 2022, in the amount of $25,000 as attached, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion.
I'll just keep in mind that we're going to be using Title II A money as well as the ESAR grant money to help with this, and hopefully by the end of this particular training, we'll have in-house trainers, and we'll be able to utilize our own staff to be able to share the teaching techniques offered to send them around.
So this is actually just insert, or just training, it's not any materials per se?
A lot of coaching, there may be some supply that come along with it, but it's mostly touching working with staff, being here on site, working virtually with them, modeling, either you do that.
Okay, great.
Now, is this, from what I've read in Anna's email, this is needed to support the IEP? So what are we doing now?
We're using it. We have a couple teachers that have gone through the initial training. We actually have one in more, you could probably see who's better than I, that's using actually the summer.
Yeah, I believe all of our teachers have gone through the training. I have two of mine, three using it in practice this year, and it was amazing.
So would be something that you could use with regular ed students down the road, or is it geared more towards making up great gaps and achievement?
Um, yeah, I mean, potentially depending on the needs of the regular ed student, maybe there might be a few students who benefit from that level of intervention.
Okay, so it's like a tier three?
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Carrie. All right, Megan, since I skipped you, I'll let you go first and ask, you should have done a fine answer.
Thanks. Letter A, consideration to retroactively approve the request for one of an employee cafeteria worker to use 30 minutes unpaid leave time on Wednesday, May 26, 2021, from 1:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m., and Friday, May 28, 2021, as not a given these days, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter B, consideration to accept the letter of resignation from Pearson Collins dated June 1, 2021, as Title I instructional aid effective at the end of the 2020-2021 school year as attached.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, who seconded? Did I miss it? I'm sorry, Carrie seconded. Okay, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got it. Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Letter C, consideration to approve posting in-house for the May 20, Title I instructional aid positions.
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
B, consideration to approve the request from Callie Manning to remain a volunteer with the varsity football team for the 2021-22 school year, so moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
E, consideration to approve the MOA with the Allegheny Claring Valley School Gospel and the ACBA, ACBA and Julie Raybuck, for summertime work, AC Valley Cyber School as attached.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
F, consideration to approve the move of Andrea Stewart from Assistant Business Manager, Assistant Business Manager to Business Manager effective July 1, 2021, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? Other than, we're gonna miss you, Emmy. I'm sure you're gonna enjoy it immensely.
Hey, Candy, can you send Emmy a letter of gratitude?
I'd love to.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Jen? Think we lost her. Erin's coming. Erin Hall, come on down. Probably went through a dead zone. Hello?
Jen.
Yep. All right, Jen, I don't know what you heard, but we have a motion on the table to approve the move of Andrea Stewart to the, from Assistant Business Manager to Business Manager effective July 1. Are you in favor? Yeah. Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
G, consideration to hire Cassie Fatchdollar as a temporary fourth grade teacher based on grant funding during the 2021-22 school year at a Master Step One salary of $47,712, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
H, consideration to hire Rebecca Johnson as a first grade long-term staff during the 2021-22 school year, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody need to abstain? Motion carries.
I, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as cross-country coach from Ashley Root, so moved.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody need to abstain? Motion carries.
Letter J, consideration to advertise for the May 20 cross-country coach position, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion, anybody wanna coach cross-country?
We can't run our own.
I know. You know anybody that wants to coach cross-country?
I can't run like that long.
I would be far behind you at that rate, so... All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody need to abstain? Motion carries.
Okay, consideration to approve the FLE trainer contract between the Allegheny Claring Valley School District and Devon Coffman dated June 17, 2021, as attached, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion.
I'd like to add that I did get a late email from Turner too, where he's asked me to table this motion until next month, because we will be able to get the committee together, and the fact that this contract's vastly different than professional stuff that we may be looking into, he made a recommendation available.
Okay. So it will remain under the old contract until?
Yes.
Okay. So we need to vote this motion down. So all in favor of removing this motion from the agenda?
Aye.
Right? Anybody opposed? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so now we need to make a motion that we're gonna table this until further discussion.
Make a motion to table Letter K until further discussion.
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Lena, you wanna do instructional services?
Sure. That's his German. So at the elementary, since our last meeting, we had two of our major transitional activities that happened. On May 26, we were glad to welcome sixth grade families into the building once again, and we recognized and celebrated the class of 2027. We were sending about 60 students up to the high school. And as is the circle of life, on June 1st and 2nd, we welcomed the students of the class of 2034. And their families for kindergarten registration. We had 42 students pre-registered, and the majority of them came for pre, uh, the registration dates. And we always hope to pick up a few more through the summer and at new student registration. New student registration will be August 10th and 11th, and if you watch our website or Facebook page, there will be more information in early July. Michelle was asking to post then about new student registration times and how to make your appointments, because it is by appointment only. And then I have Tammy make a packet for you that looks like this on the front. Just to talk to you about what's currently going on here at the elementary schools with our grant-funded summer camp. We invited 22 students, and of those 22 students, we had 18 that have been regulars. Nine of our 12 days were completed as of today. And the way we're running our camps, we have five rotations that the kids go through between 9:00 and 11:00, so they're about 22 minutes each. And those five rotations are a reading rotation, a math practice rotation, a math fast rotation, a STEM rotation, where they have like a culminating project by Thursday. For instance, last week they made race cars, I forget what the project was today. But the fifth station is progress monitoring combined with a computer-based math game called Samdog, so while that teacher progress monitors one student, the other two students are playing Samdog. Some as if they should be. So those are the five rotations they go through while they're here for summer camp. And they are definitely trying to make it fun, like Mrs. Lowry is adding music to the math. So the kids seem to be having a great time while they're learning. The packet that I may do is what they're keeping for progress monitoring, this particular one is for ELA. So that top sheet is just a DIBL summary, like across the bottom, it shows you the bar grades, and where they should be beginning, middle, and end of year for that grade level of each of the things that we test throughout the year. We're not testing all of those things, progress monitoring all of those things at summer camp. With the kindergarten and first grade students, we're just looking at phonemes, phonemes, segmentation, which is PSF one here, and the whole word reading. With the older students, they are doing fluency with reading passages. So we don't have any student names on here, so where you see like ELA student 1, 2-1, that's first grader, second student, or 3-1 is first grader, third student. And it shows you on each of the dates that they were here, and there is a key at the end that tells you what all of them are to me, like if they were absent, or they couldn't be progress monitored that day for some reason. You know, and our hope is always that from day one, so the final day, that there is improvement. And if you go down through these, you'll see that in most cases, that is the case. Now, when you compare it to the DIBL chart, I sat and had a meeting with them about the chart of monitoring today, just to look at where the kids are, and we're very pleased with the majority of them making some progress. You know, there are some that are still below grade level, like where they should be for the grade level they're going into, but they're making progress. And that was our hope with the summer camp, that we get them closer to the grade line benchmark that we'd like to see in the fall. And then we're doing the same thing with math, at the math rotation, the math fluency rotation, they track how many they can identify each day, and the hopes are that by the end, their beginning numbers and their end numbers will be there, will be part. So I just wanted to have a quick overview, I'm obviously not gonna read every student to you, but you can kind of see how the kids are doing at summer camp, and that it does seem to be helping, you know, hopefully we'll see those results in the fall when we do begin your testing. So that's just a peek into what summer camp looks like. We have three more days, next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. It's kind of been nice to have kids in the building for the last few years. Do we need them? Um, not officially, but Mrs. Redding had a few things that were left, we're going to expire, so... Milk, juice, some ice cream. And then we're next to ice cream, and then probably animal crackers left. So anything that I had that would be expiring before we could use them, I let the teachers know to come down, grab them a snack, so get milk, juice, and cracker, or something like that, while they're here in the morning. So all right, our fridge is empty, which is fantastic.
And that's my report, I did it.
Davidson, don't have a report or no?
No, we don't have a report.
Federal programs.
Federal Program Committee met today. We received an additional $15,039 in the ESAR II fund, which is gonna be used towards the summer camp program. We also discussed having possibly a stakeholder meeting in July to discuss with the public, the ESAR III grant and the uses for that. We're gonna discuss that further at our next meeting at the end of June.
District report.
All right, Lena, I have a couple items. First and foremost, the ARP ESAR Help and Safety Plan guidelines that are two weeks, and just to provide an update, we have to get the committee back together, working on the plan, and it has to be submitted by July 30 at 2:00 for the ESAR III money. They're calling it the ARP, which is the American Rescue Plan, ESAR Help and Safety. There's a lot of questions out there, you know, the farm mask and all that stuff, and the plan's pretty open, depending on your particular needs, like your school's history, but the big item that they're looking for is face-to-face instruction, and obviously moving that. I don't know the specifics of the plan yet, because they referenced the CDC guideline. CDC guidelines still cover universal correct masking, modifying facilities, distancing, handwashing, respiratory, sedatives, claim to contact, tracing, diagnostic assessments, and so on and so forth. So the plan's gonna be developed by the committee that we have pulled together, and we'll put a plan into place that's gonna meet our needs. But I think, you know, personally, I think it's gonna be very difficult to come back to enforce the masking, unless we have some kind of outbreak and we have a situation that won't work. So I have some information coming in, and I'll provide to the school board as well as the community without taking a lot of it to come in right now. But we're optimistic that we can get back into face-to-face instruction and regain some kind of normalcy. What we did last year did work, I do encourage social distancing, handwashing, and such. As far as the face covering, that's yet to be determined. We do have a new template for the plan as well, and it goes hand-in-hand with the ESAR III money that's coming in, so more information to come. In addition, we've been meeting with the AC Valley team, we met in April, May, and we're hosting the facility, here in this facility, and the meeting's been productive, there's been a lot of communication, we're hooking a plan for an activity next summer that can generate some economy and bring more people into the area. It's been fun meeting with the stakeholders and community, and all the board members are invited as well, so the next meeting that we have, I'll make sure to get an invite out. There's two new, two new pieces of legislation, there's Act 13 of 2020, and that's a modified version of Act 82 of 2012, and that's for the Teacher and Principal Evaluation System. Where I attended the training today, and we'll be providing professional development to the teachers and the staff who are being a third as well. And it really breaks down into the different domains for observation, teacher-specific, Teacher-specific, L A majors, principal performance goals, building-level data, and of course, professional development. And then in addition to that, we have Act 80 Team of 2019, which is the Threat Assessment Team. So we'll create a team that'll be in front of you in July. We'll have to get a team leader and put a plan into place. So if there's any kind of threats, that we have a formal process on how to evaluate that threat. Just an update on the Foxburg Water Authority. I did the town's 2 and 7 meeting and we had a very productive discussion down there with the elected officials. And they provided some updates. You know, there was a lot of work that they put into the system as far as grant writing, replacements for various hydrants and valves. They have 100 new meters coming in. And we're actually working in conjunction with the Clarion County Housing Authority. And they'll be attending the next meeting to hopefully support the Foxburg Water Authority with upgrades. They're looking at replacing the tank. The main lines are good. It's the lateral lines that go into the private residential families that are broken and having some problems. So we're seeing that we can't get our local community members some additional help. So we're moving in the right direction. And finishing off with that meeting, the request that I had is that they have their technician on site for the first week of school in August. Generally, when we come back, it puts a strain on the system and that's where we have problems. So hopefully with good communication, we'll be able to continue to support our local water authority. In addition, I wanted to give you an update on the legislative trip that I had taken. It was very productive. We met with Crossing Plain legislators. We had a little discussion on charter and cyber school reform, basic education funding, special education funding formula, minimum wage, county agency support, and substitute teacher shortage. In the Capitol right now, there's a lot of discussion going on with various legislative bills that are being discussed along with the budget. Governor Wolfsey's doubling down on the $10 billion nest egg that's needed to fund public education in the state. He says that there's a $3 billion revenue surplus. And he's asking lawmakers to approve the $1.35 billion increase in basic education funding, including a $1.15 billion increase that'll run through the Fair Funding Committee. Let's keep in mind that in Pennsylvania, we are underfunded and we're struggling here at AC Valley, but everybody is. The state share of the total district spending is 38%, which ranks 44th in the country. Special education costs grew 66%, but they've only been increased 11%. Pennsylvania's underfunding public education by $4.6 billion. And 9% of the CTE centers are paid for by local district and they don't get any state money at all. The grown gap between poor and wealthy districts is $4,800 per student. And graduation rates are roughly 20% higher in more wealthy districts. 86% of the students attending school districts are not absolutely funded if that's high. So we have a true funding issue here in Pennsylvania. It's not just locally. We're crazy about it. Though we continue to push for funding and quality. With that being said, there are some challenges that we have in front of us. Right now, we're seeing Senate Bill 1 and Senate Bill 733 being discussed. And it's with the Senate House or the Senate right now and looking to go over to the House. But basically, Senate Bill 1, this bill provides another option for charter schools approval other than local school board by establishing a public charter school commission. And it could actually take the cost that we put in public or put into charter schools by $185 billion and increase it to $300, I'm sorry, $185 billion and increase it to $300 million. So we're adequately opposed to that bill. We've reached out to our local legislators. And actually, it works. It is stalled in the chamber right now. So that may or may not be pushed through. Senate Bill 77 is a certified voucher system as well. We were talking about that on the board. It's the Keystone Scholarship Program for exceptional students. And again, that's something that we do oppose only because there's no additional financial support for the school business as well. So those are two big taken bills that are being discussed and may actually get tied to the budget as it goes through. There's also other action in House HR 15. That's the School Plus Drivers Amendment. And they're doing a comprehensive analysis of the current school plus driving industry right now to see how they can address the shortage. There's a Senate Bill 324 out there that's for foster children and to ensure their graduation. And this bill actually creates an alternative diploma and they call it the Keystone Diploma. And then the last item that I'll address and I clean it is Senate Bill 554, and it's a sunshine act. It's moving through the Senate and it's actually going with 149 to 0. And this makes agencies provide their agendas to the public before the meeting. But this is where it gets tricky. Once the agenda has been finalized and posted to the public, the agency may not take official action on any item that's not listed on the notes, except for emergency situations. So sometimes we make adjustments to the agenda, like we did the same thing. That will be no longer permitted. And there's just a lot of action in the Capitol right now. And we're optimistic that we'll have a budget passed on time as we just knock back the shortage. That budget can be. That concludes my report.
Funny that you mentioned about the money. It was in the last two weeks, I think it was KDA or WTA, I don't know if anybody saw that in the evening news, had a big story on why are schools, they've got more money than ever, why are they not being able to get their budget? It was all slanted towards how schools are screwing up and we've got more money than we should, than we've ever had in one or two years. They have no clue. But that was all across the news for people to hear this time. What was this part of?
Yeah, trivia.
Okay, consideration to approve the enrollment class size data and staff for the 2020, 2021 school year. Data June 17, 2021, as attached, so moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Consideration to approve the list of graduating seniors for the class of 2021 as attached, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries?
Consideration to approve the 2021, 2022 fundraising calendar as attached, so moved.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Okay, I don't think we have any policy this evening?
No.
And no facilities? So transportation, Diane, wanna do that one?
Sure. Consideration to approve the request from Jennifer Callender, Callender Transportation, to add Emily Shoemaker as a driver upon receipt of all appropriate documentation and an interview with administration, so moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Okay, so we move on to miscellaneous. Cory?
Career Center reports, the biggest thing I can remember feels like forever. They're looking at getting bids to do a secure entrance up there. And other than that, just kind of get ready for next year, trying to get enough maintenance and custodial staff in the building cleaned and ready to go. Anything else you need?
I wasn't there, I asked somebody. A jury movie.
Yeah, not a lot, but entrance was the big thing, trying to update the building.
Steph? Lena, do we have anything from the I U?
So the Learning Lab that we're so excited about is kind of slow-going right now. They found a substitute for maintenance. And there are definite work classes coming back into the building. So they're trying to get all of that organized for next school year. That's pretty much about it. I think I've been talking about writing an email for superintendents because the same people go to the meetings and the others do not. So David, I do attend everyone. I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, they did ask us to reach out for a board rest, but I'm gonna do it.
I'm like, I attend them all. So I, and you know, it's really hard for them to get a form sometime out of 17 school districts. It's incredibly hard. There's just people that, I mean, like they don't show up online. I mean, it's nothing, so.
And Dr. Stone and Lena Blaine.
We all know Lena Blaine.
How could you not know Lena Blaine? Yeah, so.
Hey, that's a question. Isn't there bylaws, like we have that say, you know, after so many meetings that people bid that they have to be voted off of that board and that the school would have to replace them with another director?
So that's what happened to one school district, and it's probably gonna happen with the other ones too. Because they, I mean, there's some people that I've only seen one time in the whole time I've been there. And they're gonna have, I mean, they're gonna have to do something. That's why they're going to the school districts and saying, if your representative isn't coming, you need to, you know, find another solution, so.
We get some of the same thing at Career Center, some that we've seen.
And Jen, I think you're absolutely correct. They struggle because, you know, it's just one more meeting and it's hard to get additional work done to go.
And.
I'm sure that it is. Everybody else, you know, you don't wanna add one more thing on, but, you know, you have to be flipping the divisions, so, you know, step up and do your job.
Lena did not ask.
So, and second of all, with there being Zoom meetings, it's a lot easier for everybody to get on. Oh, yeah. We have people, I mean, from Titusville and Poncy, and I mean, there's a huge, I mean, I6 is huge, 17 districts, so they're from all over. So.
So they always do a Zoom meeting?
So they didn't. They did the face-to-face. And we got more people actually going up and coming for the face-to-face one than for the Zoom one, which I thought was incredibly weird because it turned around from Titusville to Clarion and Poncy. I mean, it's quite a haul. But it's becoming a definite issue with the board, the I U board. So I think this next week, Zoom, July, we have, we'll be that face-to-face in August.
Okay, thanks, Lena. I don't believe there's any correspondence. And we did not have our last tech committee meeting. We had a lot of conflicts, so we, I don't think, we haven't restarted yet, have we, Jen?
We have not, and that's my fault because I've been traveling, so.
No problem. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it.
Nope, didn't miss anything.
Okay. Do we have an athletic committee update?
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, just spring sports wrapping up. I think there were no issues. If we didn't have our last, am I correct?
We have a meeting.
Well, we had a cooperative.
Oh, you're right.
You have a meeting last year.
Yeah, that's right.
Janine, would you do that next motion?
Sure. Consideration to approve the agreement between the Allegheny, Clarion Valley School District and the Keystone School District for cooperative sponsorship of Boys and Girls Soccer for two years, the 2021 and 2021 for 2022, and the 2022, 2023 seasons with a review in November of 2022, as attached, so moved.
Second. Okay, we have any discussion on this? Is the co-op with Kern City done, that soccer one?
We're no longer involved in it. I know there was a meeting on the Kern City and Dr. Tullio as far as getting out of the PIA double A side of things. So it seems like it's a little unclear. Kern City may have power numbers and up them in classification, I believe, because of that. So they're trying to get out of that piece of it, and I'm not sure I would take the email to come through. So I can't, if Dr. Jordan or Dr. Tullio were here, they'd probably be able to provide me with more information. But I did see that email come through maybe a month ago, and I haven't seen anything to follow up.
We couldn't be at both Kern City and Keystone co-ops, right?
So how many students, David, are we talking about here?
Scott said that he did a survey. There was about eight students. I don't know, some, I don't know if anybody told me I have to come in to follow up with that. I don't know if it's four, four, eight, maybe. I mean, we do have a limited number of male athletes, you know. It does concern me. I'd recommend that we both know this, just so that we can maybe support the program we have here. But it would be a good opportunity for some students to get their own next program.
Yeah, we offered the other one. We had what, one student that went?
Right.
Yeah, I thought we had one, that was.
We had a girl and a boy, I think.
Okay. Oh, we were?
Yeah, I don't know, two started to put it on.
Okay.
We don't pay anything though, unless we get bids to opt in, so we're not out of anything.
It's just an opportunity to offer and see what happens. Since we did have the one at Kern City, people may be kind of expecting it, you know, to be in some ways. And see what happens. Like I said, if we don't have anybody sign up, we don't get charged. Why did that end with Kern City?
Because that's, one of the students that was really big in the program left our district.
To go to Kern City.
To go to Kern City. So basically, it fell apart because it was.
Nobody went.
Right. That's my understanding.
The girl still went, right?
Yes, I think she finished it.
But then he left.
Now, she, she's still in the district. She graduated? She graduated?
Yeah.
So any of the students that were involved when.
Yes, she graduated.
So we're completely out.
Two girls are studying then.
Well, according, we don't know that yet.
Yeah.
We're still waiting to find out because I don't know how that works with, you know, the PI double A. I always thought that was like a two-year commitment.
You're a bit cycle. It's the two-year cycle. They're in the middle of it. North Clan got the same problem, that they were gonna leave the sports area co-op, the soccer. And they couldn't because of the change in the classification. See, Kern City would be up in class, they could come back down in class.
Right, so they.
They play up, which I don't think they have to, that big a deal for that.
Right.
But I don't think, I don't think kids are gonna be in trouble with going to Keystone because I don't think the numbers would be over that threshold.
No, we knew that. But this was the second year. We ended the second year of Kern City. So it was a two-year agreement that should be done.
No, he's talking about the PIA double A. I mean, they, they kind of.
I honestly feel like, so we get clarification on exactly what's going on with PIA double A and Kern City and all of that. I don't think we should be voting on another agreement with Keystone until we get, make sure we understand exactly what, what, what the process is and where to stand on that. That's just my opinion.
I agree with Jen. I thought this was just, we just ended the first year with Kern City. Was it the second year?
It was the second.
Okay.
My concern, my only concern with that is if Keystone's starting any summer workouts or kids may potentially miss a month or two, you know, a month of that stuff. I mean, I think we should get it, you know, figured out, but.
Wonder how soon we will know.
Don't we text it?
I mean, if it's with the PIA double A, I don't know how quickly that will.
I know.
So, like you said, I don't know how that affects us if we're in agreement. Technically, we're still in agreement with Kern City. And we try and do agree with Keystone. I know the numbers aren't an issue as far as classifications, but I don't know what would happen if there's both agreements out there. So.
That is a point that negatively impacts either Keystone or Kern City because we messed up on, on how we were handling the contract piece of it.
Yeah.
Well. My process there is, you know, why did we even begin discussing it if we weren't sure that this was something that could have been done easily?
Originally, when we started talking about it, we thought it was done with Kern City. When we originally started talking about it, because that's why it came up, was we were done, we're going to renew.
But it, but I think we may mention that it's PIA double A, you know, only.
Right, I think that came up with the last meeting, and then, so we have a box clarification from that now.
Dr. Tullio just sent me a text and he says he doesn't think they voted on it. And I wrote back, PIA double A or Kern City? So I don't think we're officially out of the other part.
Okay, well then, we can't do that.
Okay, so.
Table it?
We have, remind me, we have a motion, we have a first and a second on the table. We need to decide if we're, whether we're gonna vote this up or down. If we think we should table it, then we wanna vote this down and we'll make a motion to table it. Okay? All right, so all those in favor?
To what, table it?
No, to vote this motion down.
Oh, was it voted down?
We already have the motion on to vote it.
We did, but what? We did, but what I'm saying is if you're in favor of it, you want to, yeah. If you don't, if we want to vote it down, then you need to be opposed. That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So any of those in favor? All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion does not carry. Now.
I make a motion that we table this until we are able to clarify whether or not we still maintain a cooperative agreement with Current City.
Uh, Dr. Tullio said that Current City has not voted to agree to that.
Okay, so we are still.
So we still have the agreement with Current City. Okay. So then.
So I don't think, I don't think we need to vote to table it down since we've already voted it down. What we could do is just bring it back to, bring a new motion back to the agenda in July once we get clarification on what happened. We've already voted this motion down, so.
Okay. Uh, finally, Jimmy?
Uh, we can't, whatever, we're meeting up with the city council yesterday.
Okay. Any old business? Any new business? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we get done.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not going to ask you.
Aye.
Uh, Kim, we just mixed up that we're moving into the next session for personal. Jen, keep me on that phone. Thank you.